We'll wait till Blaine gets back here.
That's not going to have the county report then, huh?
A meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll roll call, please.
House members.
Yes.
Salvi.
Yes.
Miller.
Felixson.
Yes.
Mayor G.
Yes. Citizen comments? We have none. No public hearings. We have reading and approval for the March 25th regular meeting minutes.
I'll move approval of the regular meeting minutes for March 25th.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And we have the condensed version minutes from March 25th.
I'll move approval of the condensed version of the minutes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And we have the board of review minutes from April 4th. I will move approval of the minutes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. And we have the consent agenda consisting of...
Addition there to...
Oh, I was gonna put that... Oh, I was gonna put it down here.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to add it to the agenda.
Okay, I'll do that right now. Thank you. I make a motion to add an item C under city manager report for... to take action on airport weather station. And Blaine will explain that when we get there.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. And we have the consent agenda consisting of the audit of city bills, March transit report, gambling report, application for exempt permit, and the two December and February tree board minutes. I will move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
I will second.
And any discussion or any questions on any of the items?
Just a brief question for Blaine. I think he said regarding Mr. Bregerman has taken over for Jim.
Yep.
I know Jim sat on the tree board. I'm assuming that he's gonna have to get... Because wasn't Jim an Arbor?
Yeah.
And he'll have to get... Is he gonna fill that spot then too then?
Yeah, he'll be... He'll be the city forester. And so then he'll get a certification for that.
Okay. All right. That's the only question I got.
Okay. Any... Any other comments or questions on the consent agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Citizens' requests and communications. We have accept a donation to the Morris Public Library for $2,369.88.
Was that earmarked for anything specific or just in general?
I don't... I don't think it was. Not that... Not that I know of. We got the check brought over to us. We just wanted to make sure that it was accepted by the city council. I don't think it was.
Okay. I may make a motion to accept the donation amount of $2,369.88 to the library.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. And we have the Arbor Month proclamation, which I will read. Whereas, climate change is a complex problem that impacts all Minnesotans and our ability to thrive. And whereas, trees capture carbon from the atmosphere and store it in their trunks, roots, and surrounding soil, thereby offsetting greenhouse gas emissions. And whereas, trees conserve and filter rainwater and reduce stormwater runoff, thereby decreasing the pollutants that wash into our rivers and wetlands. And whereas, a healthy tree canopy, shades, and shelters are buildings, therefore providing substantial economic benefit by reducing heating and cooling costs. And whereas, trees provide important food and habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees beautify our city, increase our enjoyment of the outdoors, and improve property values. And whereas, Minnesota is at risk of losing over 1 billion ash trees due to emerald ash borer, which has been detected 50 miles from Morris, which would impact carbon storage, water quality, energy usage, wildlife habitat, and quality of life. And whereas, the city of Morris has committed to an ongoing community forest program involving the protection of existing trees, including special care of heritage trees, and the planting of a robust and diverse mix of boulevard and park trees each year. And whereas, Arbor Day has been celebrated since 1872 and is observed nationally this year on April 30th. And now, therefore, I, Sheldon Gee, Mayor of the city of Morris, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Arbor Month in the city of Morris, and urge all citizens to help care for our trees and to try to plant at least one tree in 2022 to beautify our city, improve our environment, and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Okay. And that's just the proclamation. We don't have a vote or anything on that?
Nope.
Okay. Ordinances and resolutions. We have a resolution to elect standard revenue loss under ARPA.
Yeah, so I... I went in on a Zoom meeting with the city county managers group that we sit in together on and share information and stuff. And I actually showed up late to this meeting. And they're just finishing a discussion about all the cities passing resolutions, this resolution that you have... have on the table. And so then I contacted my friend up in Detroit Lakes and I said, "What is that all about?" And they said, "Well, the federal government came out with their final rule on the American Rescue Plan Act money." And as part of that final rule, one of the things they did was... Because I think we had talked a little bit about this before. There were some uses that you could do with the American Rescue Plan money that you couldn't do with the CARES Act money that we had. One of the uses was you could use it for revenue loss offset. And I think we had talked about that before where, you know, we get local government aid. We didn't lose any... Actually, to sit down and calculate revenue loss based on the things that we normally do. The water plant, we probably wouldn't have been able to show anything just because of the fact that it was a brand-new plant at the time. And so we're actually taking in more money than the old plant took in just because of the nature of, you know, what we're doing at the plant. So then what we talked about was, you know, one of the uses that they would allow would be water and wastewater. And so then we spent money. We get $582,000. We got half of it last year. This year, we're gonna get the other half automatically distributed to us. But lo and behold, the federal government came out with a rule in January when they did the final. And they said, "When it comes to revenue loss calculation, we will grant a standard deduction of up to $10 million without receipt or calculation." So basically, it's like your income taxes, them giving you an automatic deduction. You don't have to show any receipts or anything for it. And I said, "You know, is that right? Is that the way it is?" And they said, "Yeah." So everybody's doing these resolutions. So it basically washes that money through the revenue loss category up to 10 million, you know. And, you know, the big metropolitan cities are getting more than 10 million. So as of right now, we probably have about $250,000 that we haven't allocated out to anything so far. We talked about putting that towards the Sixth Street, Columbia Avenue, and Iowa Avenue projects. But at the same time, we have the ability to borrow money to pay for those projects through a bond issue that we're gonna do. And so then, number one, I'm recommending that we pass this resolution to take the standard deduction and then we're done with ARPA. You know, as far as the requirements to keep track of all the stuff that we need to keep track of because it's basically cleared out. And then we can go from there and we can look at, you know, is there something different that we want to do with that? You know, we had talked about, like the airport project that we had. You know, we had to come up with, you know, $100,000. And we had some extra ARPA money that came to the airport for maintenance and things like that. But we can sit down and we can take a look at, you know, what we do with the rest of that money going forward. But it's kind of the way the federal government works sometimes. They don't know what to do with the rules and regulations. And then as they go along, they finally make a decision. And that is the final rule. There's no change to it.
You know, one thought I had along that regarding that money, Blaine, is perhaps we could take that money and use it for something that's gonna benefit the entire city instead of... I know it would benefit, in your case, the Sixth Street project you mentioned. But, you know, we talked about the tennis court over there. We were gonna redo that. And we scratched that project because of money. And if I remember right, we were kind of in that ballpark area for the cost to redo that tennis court. So I guess my personal thought is, we take that $250,000 and put it towards a project. I don't know if that's the particular one, but one that's gonna benefit the entire city instead of...
Well, and like I said, we can talk about... You know, we already have... We have $200,000 that we're footing on the transit garage. We have $130,000 that we're footing on the airport project, you know. And so there are things that we have to come up with local shares on already.
Right.
But, you know, and then like, I mean, we have plenty of time to look at those things.
Gotcha.
Because, you know, anything that we don't spend that our reserve money on just means we have more reserve money that's sitting there that we can spend on other things.
Gotcha, yeah.
So...
Or we can reduce taxes.
Or we can reduce taxes.
Future day.
Yeah, you know, and that's kind of... Yeah. Because anytime you keep taxes down or reduce taxes, it benefits everybody.
Right.
Okay.
So that's what that one is all about. So that would be a resolution.
Okay.
I can move on that resolution, authorizing... Resolution to elect the standard revenue loss under the ARPA.
Okay. I will second that. Any discussion? We'll have roll call vote on the resolution, please.
House members.
Yes.
Yes.
Felixson.
Yes.
Miller.
Mayor G.
Yes. City manager's report recommendations. First off, we got the Chevy Volt. What are we gonna do with that?
What are we gonna... So we knew that we're making the last lease payment on it. And, you know, I actually was sitting there thinking about it. And then somebody mentioned something about, you know, not being able to get vehicles and the high price of used vehicles and stuff. And so I actually stopped out to talk to Dan Drifts about, you know, whether or not, you know, there was something that maybe the dealership could do or whatever. And I actually didn't hear back from Dan. But one of the things I did do is I went on to Kelley Blue Book and put in our VIN number on that. And as you can see in this information... And we know and understand that it's hard to get vehicles now. And used vehicles have a lot of value now. And so the idea that we would just turn that vehicle in and then the dealer would probably turn around and sell that thing for 25 grand or whatever, you know, maybe the better thing first to do is to just pay out the lease amount. You can see what it is, $18,641.50. And then we could... We could sell it on the open market.
So we've had that four years?
Uh, it's... Yeah, it's three years. It was a 30... It was a 38-month lease, I think.
Oh, 38 months, okay.
Yeah.
So in 38 months, we used it at about 15... Or was it?
Yeah, there's some miles on it when we got it.
15,000 miles.
Yeah. You know, in the last two years, there's really nowhere to go.
Right, right. And that's part of it too. I guess, I don't know, we certainly need to talk about that. I like the option of buying it out and quite frankly, just keeping it if, you know, we need a car to do some stuff with, you know.
We could do that too. You know, I have no intention right now of, you know, because we talked about this at the budget work session. I have no intention right now of going out and looking for another vehicle to acquire, whether it's on a lease or to purchase. You know, just because we're still not doing as much traveling as what we used to do. But it's starting to open up more where department heads and the librarian and other people are going to meetings and conferences and stuff like that.
And they'll take that Volt?
Uh, they could... Yeah, well, that's... If we keep it, then we're gonna want to make sure people are using it.
Yeah.
That's the bottom line.
Bottom line is if we keep it, then we drive it.
And that was gonna be, you know, we talked about that during the budget work session where, you know, if you're gonna have another vehicle, then you use it. If you don't want to use it, then you use your own vehicle and you pay your own way. You know, but the reimbursement of mileage wouldn't be given out if there's a vehicle available. Now, if it's not available, then it's... Because there are times that, you know, more than one person's gone, but...
I don't know. I just think that, I mean, we got it because it was an EV.
Right.
And we're still involved with the Climate Smart Municipalities. If we get rid of it, we're kind of getting rid of something that we're trying to promote. And we don't need a new one. I mean, it's an EV. It's in good condition. You know, we can show people that, hey, you know, we're still driving this 2017 because that's the economic thing to do. That's the smart municipality thing to do. So I don't know. I guess I would certainly be in favor of just keeping it, using it when we can and encouraging, you know, department leaders and stuff to use it. And council, you know, when you have out-of-town meetings and stuff like that.
Yeah, I know I'm going up to Duluth for the lead conference this year. They're finally gonna have an in-person one. They haven't had one for two years. But I would definitely take it up there.
Sure. I know, council, what do you think?
I guess I'd be in favor of that too, Mayor. It makes sense. I mean, it's... It isn't gonna cost us a lot to... You know, you got insurance and things like that, you know, that you're gonna be paying on it. But if we can put it to use, you know, you're not gonna be able to go buy another vehicle for that kind of money.
And I know, I think Reggie found a CSO for the summer. So that's part of our process. And that's who used it the last time was Danielle before we hired her as police officer. But the CSO used it. So it's... I think we're gonna have a CSO this summer if all the paperwork goes through.
Yeah, I think buy it out and keep it as long as, you know, like you said, if it's available, they use it. If not, that's the only way they get paid to use it so that we... I don't want it to just sit there. It's gotta get used. We'd leave it up to you to determine at some point going, "We're not using it, guys. Let's sell it." Then I'd be in favor of selling it. But I think to buy it out now is a smart play.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I mean, we'll always get... It's always gonna be worth some money right now. We all know what the used car market is, so whether we keep it a year and then sell it or...
Do you need a motion there to buy that out or...?
Uh, yeah.
I'll make a motion to buy out the Chevy Volt.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. City manager newsletter, city manager report.
I'm not sure what all I want to talk about. There's a lot of different things in there. But I will say this. I think we found replacements for all of our employees. County's not too happy about one of our hires, so it's kind of payback for the police officers being taken over to the county, I think. But we did hire one of the county's accountants that's gonna come in and work with our accounting office. So we're pretty happy about that hire. And so then we'll be full strength. And as far as employees, probably the beginning of May. So you're probably gonna see... Well, we'll get a chance to let you know who they are once everybody's in place and working. You might, if you drive by Morris Floreal, you see that there's a sold sign on there now. So Joe Riley bought the building. His intention is to tear down the building fairly quickly, although there's some things that we want to make sure are in place before he does it in case there's some opportunities for some development money through grants or even tax increment financing. So I'll be working with him on that. And, yeah, we did go by and we closed up some of the holes and stuff. But we, you know, we didn't want to go inside the building because of the nature of the structure. I know and understand that there was no fuel contamination in the ground. There was some asbestos contamination in there, but I believe they did the remediation on that already. You know, so that's a plan. And we haven't seen a proposal yet for what's gonna be built on there. But that's who bought the property. Spent a lot of time this week talking to people about the bus garage. I must have talked to three dozen people about it. So every single person that saw an advertisement for that property had knew nothing about what the history of the zoning was on it. So I had probably four people ask me how the fishing was on the lake. I had, I mean, there's everything from people wanting to park a camper in there and live in a camper inside of it, and what is residential. And, but in the end, you know, there's a couple of things that are... It's just important to understand is, number one, that building is not livable as it sits. And that was a question that was asked because it has a bathroom in there and has a little kitchenette, but it is not a residential structure. The other thing is that you cannot do storage there. You know, that was brought up over and over and over and over. And it's like, there are 25 people watching that building. And as soon as you start bringing in boats to store them in the shed, they're gonna see it and they're gonna wonder what's going on in there.
I don't understand. If somebody owns it, why can't they store their stuff in it?
They can store their stuff, but how many boats do you have? So if you see...
People might have a lot of stuff to store.
If you see... But then...
Look at some houses down in this area that are storing a lot of stuff outside.
But actually, I will tell you that a question came up that, you know, I think we need to take a look at in the planning commission and probably look at our policies. But storage is allowed as an accessory use to the primary use on that site. So what does that mean? It means storage is allowed in the storage building for the residential structure. And so then, one of the things that we know and understand is that there's a lot of rental units in town that the stuff stored in those buildings have nothing to do with... In those garages have nothing to do with the residential house that's on that property. And we know and understand that there's some issues with not having enough off-street parking. And when you got a two-car garage and cars can't park in them because they're full of storage from the owners of the rental property, you know, I'm not quite sure if that's what the codes mean when it comes to accessory use. Because, you know, there were some people that said, "Well, if I buy this and I rent... Fix it up and I rent out two units in there, can I store all my personal stuff in there?" And I'm not so sure that's a yes answer. You know, because just because you own it, and maybe the answer is yes, as long as it's yours. But as soon as you get into that discussion, it's like, "What if I let my best friend store his boat in there?" And it's like, yeah, and you're gonna allow him to do that for nothing? Or, you know, you can just, in the discussions, you can hear it kind of going to a different direction. Or a mechanic, can a mechanic work on vehicles in there? It's like, but you can't have a mechanic shop. But you can have a home business? Yeah, if it's part of your home. You know, because your... A home business is a certain percentage of the square footage of your home. You can have it as a home business, but that's a huge building. So it's quite possible that they could have a lot of stuff. But, you know, and the other thing is, it's not our building, you know. So, you know, we have to tell people that. It's not the Coca-Cola building because it was a bus garage. It was not Coca-Cola building, the last use. But it's my understanding, as of today, I think it was, you had to put in a proposal for that or a bid on that building. And then anybody that put in a bid would have the opportunity to maybe raise the bid on it. But we'll see what happens with it. You know, it's a lot of interesting things came up.
You know, Blaine, I just have a couple thoughts on that. Have you drove by the area out there by the new Prime Steakhouse and seen all the storage units that are coming up there? I mean, my gosh, how much storage does this town need? I mean, we got that storage. I don't care what direction you come into Morris, there's storage buildings there. I mean, how much storage do we really need?
It comes down to cost, you know. If you can get that really cheap and rent it out, you know, then... One of the best ideas I heard was, you know, buying the property and then moving the storage building, the big one, on to another site that somebody needed that building. Because you can't buy one of... You can't build one of those buildings right now very cheaply. And to move it might be the best use of that. And then you're just left with the brick building. And then you can subdivide that into parts.
You know, I drove by there and looked at that where that pool barn shed is. I don't know how that got built there in the first place. I mean, you look at how close that is to the lake.
It's right on the... Yeah.
I mean, it just looks like one end would just about drop off into crystal. It's right there. I mean, it's right on the edge.
And is there no setback on an alley, you know?
Yeah.
Well, that stuff wasn't even zoned until the early 70s.
Yeah, two feet.
I mean, they didn't even have it zoned. So, I mean, there was no rules to it.
Yeah. So we'll know shortly here who bought it, you know. And it's my understanding that Yules was sold, you know. So there's some action going on in some of these buildings. But we spent a considerable amount of time dealing with people from everywhere, other states everywhere. It's amazing how many people saw that advertisement for that.
So you would say, it says, or you're talking about, "Storage is allowable as an accessory use to an allowable principal use."
Which is...
Clarify that. Clean up the muddy murky water on that one there. So I mean, if it's allowable, is it allowable for you to live in the one building and rent the other building out for storage? Is that allowable storage?
No.
It's just, think of it as a house and a garage, you know.
A detached garage.
A detached garage and it's accessory use.
A big detached garage.
Right. But you're using it for your own personal stuff.
So as long as you don't rent any space out in there, it's... I mean, it's stor... I mean, it's storage for you and not renting it out.
In most cases, yeah. There could be things that even if you're using it just for your own needs, that it wouldn't meet the...
Because the principal use would be the single or two-family residential property.
If what you're saying is a lot of these rentals are packed full of stuff and then we're gonna enforce that on somebody else, then we're gonna have to broaden that out to all. So, I mean, I think we want to tread a little lightly on that.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It brings up a really good question. Because, you know, when John Doe's parked his, you know, car collection in a two-car garage, that the house that's on that site needs a place for cars to go off-street? You know, is that really the way it should be? You know, maybe that's the way it is.
I don't really... If that's what you guys are saying is an accessory, it isn't then because they're not the sole... They're not the proprietor of the properties being rented out. So that would actually clear up some problems. So, that would actually clear up some problems we have with cars under the road getting towed.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know, and that never came up until this whole, I mean, when you're going through the gamut of all the questions that are being asked and stuff, you know, that raises another question because, you know, there isn't a lot, you know. And so, in my mind and what I've been telling people is, the principal structure is the residential unit and the accessory structure for that residential unit is the garage. So, it's not an accessory structure for somebody that lives across town. It's for that piece of property there. And then, on the flip side, I've had, this happens all the time, people go, I'm looking at buying this empty lot. I'm gonna put up a garage to store stuff. And it's like, you can't do it. You cannot put up a garage on an empty lot because that's an accessory use to a principal use. It's not its own use, you know, and there are places where houses burn down and there's a garage left. Well, that structure's already there, so you're not gonna make them tear down the structure because it's there. You know, but that question comes up a lot, you know. Actually, I just had somebody ask that question a week ago. You know, he wanted to buy the empty lot across the street to put up a garage. Well, that's across the street. That is not on your property where your house is, you know. And so, we don't let them do that. We don't let individual garages be put up.
If somebody wanted to purchase that and wanted to do something other than maybe what's within the constraints of how it's owned, they would have to petition the zoning committee for a conditional use permit? Is that be correct?
Nope. You'd have to change the zoning.
You couldn't get a variance?
No.
You can't get a variance on that?
Not for use.
Because it's not allowed.
It's not allowed.
And we just...
Variances are usually granted for like, I want to get closer to the property line, you know, with my garage. And typically, right now, what we're giving out is we're giving out variances to go from a single-car garage to a two-car garage and then get closer to the property line. Because normally, there's like a five-foot setback from the property line. And so, that's a variance. A conditional use would be if it's an allowable use that, under conditions, and there are a bunch of allowable uses with conditions, like churches and schools and actually, a neighborhood grocery store is allowable use within that residential zoning. But conditions then are things like noise, smell, traffic, you know, screening things, stuff like that, you know. If you're gonna have a use that is gonna create problems in the neighborhood, what kind of conditions could you put on that use to kind of circumvent those problems? But, yeah, that's, you know, we attempted to try to change the zoning to allow more uses and that failed. And so, now, it's really restricted in the uses that you can have. My biggest concern is somebody's gonna buy it and just gonna attempt to try to do something that's not allowable. So, hopefully, everybody that's putting in a bid has asked the right questions.
So, if somebody would do that, how do we, do we, who regulates that? I mean, who's gonna go in and say, no, Kevin, you cannot put other people's cars in this big building?
Well, I think we got to look back to what our original, when we went through this, when we proposed the highway business, you know, so rezoning, we discussed that at length. And, you know, the planning commission was very clear that, you know, their recommendation was that we don't plan away from our comprehensive plan and how we want to, you know, take care of growth as we grow as a city. You want to keep the integrity of the neighborhood there. And, you know, you just almost gotta take a step back and look where we were at and that whole process we went through. And that's kind of why we went the direction we did because a lot of those uses that were proposed in highway business just didn't fit next to somebody's house.
Right.
And I think that's what you gotta kind of keep in mind.
So, as of right now, nothing can happen on that property. So, the minute something starts happening on that property with a new owner, then we'll know and then we'll step in because nothing can happen on it.
But I do want to stress, though, that if somebody does decide to buy it, then they want to put their personal stuff in there. It's gonna be very hard for us to go in there and discern whether or not that's their personal stuff or somebody else's because now, we're gonna have to start, we're gonna have to start going through other people's garages and saying, hey, you're storing somebody else's stuff in that garage. You can't do that. You know, I mean, we don't want, if we're gonna open up that, we gotta be pretty careful about how we're gonna do that because if that person wants to put all a bunch of the stuff in, then you get the neighbors out there, oh, there's a store of stuff for other people. Well, how are we going to govern that with everybody across the board? I'm just throwing that out there because I know that's gonna be a question.
Do you really want to go into somebody's garage if they're not, I mean, and look in a big shed to see if they're storing? I personally don't. I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to do that, you know?
I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to rent.
If you have a rental right now, do you want somebody coming in your garage and looking through there?
Right. Well, all I'm saying, that's just a question that comes.
Oh, sure.
And all I'm saying is that you know what's gonna happen in that neighborhood. As soon as something starts happening in there, we're gonna start getting calls from people. Number one, hey, who bought that place?
It's public record. They can go look in the courthouse.
What are they doing with it? It's like, it's not ours. That's what we'll tell, it's not ours. But in order for anybody to move into that place, they really, they're gonna have to come in and get a building permit to fix it up as a residential, you know, structure. But if somebody buys it and they, like you say, somebody buys it and says, I'm just putting my personal stuff in there. I'm the owner of this property. The other thing is that nothing needs to happen, you know. I've had that question come up. It's like, how soon do I have to set it up as a residential property? Never. You never have to do it as long as, I mean, that's, you need to secure the building so it's locked up and stuff like that and people can't get into it. But there's no timeline for you having to do anything. It's just, you know, if uses start showing up, then we'll have to step in and take a look at what's going on in there.
Isn't that the control mechanism you were talking about, Sheldon? If, you know, they have to apply for a building permit if they do any changes, I mean, in that part of that process, you can ask them, they have to indicate what they're doing with it, right? On their building permit when they ask for it or not? And then, then at that point...
Yeah, it'll have to meet the code.
Yeah, and then you, at that point, you can address if that's an allowable use or not.
So, that's that one.
Okay.
That's gonna be a good one.
It's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be a good one. We did have the engineers come in and take a look at the late Crystal smell. And so, they're actually gonna do some sampling and stuff and we'll take a closer look at that and try to figure out what we need to do. And then, I'll just finish by saying that we have no idea what's gonna happen in legislature right now. They have two different ideas of what direction to go and they have to come together to do anything. And I think the deadline is the middle of May, you know, so we'll wait and see. I haven't seen anything other than, you know, positive stuff for local government aid. The last run I looked at, you know, for 2023, we wind up with about, I think it was like ninety-two thousand dollars more in local government aid than what we're getting this year. So, we'll kind of wait and see. They kind of negotiate and play games and stuff in the end. So, that's kind of that. The, actually, I had to go online and find out the actual description of what AWAS stands for. So, the Automated Weather Observing System out at the airport, it's actually run by the FAA. So, we partner with them and the system is failing. I talked to one of the flyers. It is failing and the state of Minnesota asked us if we're interested in doing something with it. And initially, I said, no, not at this time because we have all these other things that we're doing. But as we're getting closer to this construction starting, which is probably gonna be in the middle of May out at the airport, they do have a system available. It's about fifty thousand dollars. The local share for us would be about fifteen thousand dollars. It is the best time to put this thing in because the airport's gonna be closed and they can bring it in and they'll be able to set it up. And then, everything will be done pretty much out there. And so, then, what they're looking for from us is just whether or not we're interested in doing this. If we are, and I'm just asking you to pass a motion to indicate if you're interested. And then, I'll go back to them and then they'll put together a small grant to do this project. But they do have one available right now. And so, then, they are interested in setting it up in Morris. So, that's, I'm recommending that we do that. And then, we'll figure out how to come up with the fifteen grand.
Well, I think that's a win and it might be a really good use of our ARPA money. But I think that's a real win to do that. And what better time than when everything is getting fixed up out there anyway? So, I guess I'll make a motion to go ahead and support the request for a new weather station.
A little second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Carrie, just one quick note. On the 28th of April at noon out at the airport, we're gonna have a, it's, we had a pre-construction meeting last year and we had to postpone the construction for a year because of electronics equipment that they couldn't get ahold of. So, we're gonna have, it's kind of a quasi-pre-construction meeting and then the engineer will be there. And I'm gonna invite the airport commission to be there, whether or not people can be there or not. We'll just set up the meeting. And then, the farmer that farms around there will be there so that everybody knows and understands what's gonna go on. They're talking about starting in May and then September 9th would be the deadline for them to get the airport opened back up for aircraft to be able to fly in there. So, I'll send out a meeting invite for that. And then, Reggie couldn't be here tonight, so then, you did get a copy of the police report and he suggested just take a look at it. If you have any questions, you can get back to him. Otherwise, at the next meeting he's here, he'd be willing to answer any questions that you have and maybe give a little presentation on it. Although, the next meeting is gonna be our second reading of the ordinance for annexation. And then, we also have the auditors coming at the next meeting, I believe.
It's a nice report. I looked through it. Tell the chief, thank you.
It's kind of a new format that he put together, so he did a good job with it.
Yeah, tell the chief, thank you.
That's all I have.
All right. Anything else to talk about it, the council? Meeting adjourned.